Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm Mayor Owens. Welcome to the City of Mableton Regular City Council Meeting. It's great to see all of you here. Council staff, good evening. Is this November 12th, 2025? We will begin this meeting. We've got quite a few things to go over tonight. This is what I consider to be very important. Council meetings, they all are. This will be special in several different ways. Timeliness is everything. We do have one council member that's not going to be here this evening. But with that said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Owens.
Present.
Councilmember Ron Davis of District One.
Present.
Councilmember Damian Oladipo of District Two.
Present.
Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Keisha Jevcoat, who is Council of District Three.
Present.
Councilmember Patricia Alk of District Four.
Present.
Councilmember TJ Ferguson of District Five is not here. And Councilmember Deborah Herndon of District Six.
Present.
Okay. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Davis, please give an invocation for it, please, sir.
Yes. Let us bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, your continued guidance and protection. Father, we just pray as we are coming to the end of one year and going to the beginning of another, you continue to guide us in all that we do, Father God, as we move this city forward. Thank you for all that you do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Members of the council, we've been provided a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilman Davis.
I'm sorry, do we have an updated agenda because weren't we supposed to take off the historic preservation? Second read.
We will. We will just defer it.
Okay.
Okay. We'll just. Okay. But yes, you. Any other discussion? Or call question?
I was going to ask if you want to just go ahead and defer it now since we're in the motion.
Sure, we can. Who made the motion?
I did.
You want to modify the motion to go ahead and defer that?
Which item is it? Let's see.
I think it's 12.
It is.
Second read.
I don't see it.
I don't see it either. Are you sure?
It's not on the agenda.
Do you have a different version down there?
I can't hear what you all were saying. What is the question?
Okay. It's about the historic preservation ordinance.
I was directed to take it off.
That is correct.
I must have been old.
Councilwoman Herndon saw it. What she sees is still on there, so. But it's not on here.
It's not.
It's fine, okay.
This is fine.
Okay, we're good. All right, go ahead and call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, we will move right ahead. Item six in our agenda this evening is our public hearings. There is one public hearing, R I Z 2025-004. This is for an advocate seeking to resume four acres on Queen Mill Road. That has been deferred. That was noted in our Monday meeting that still stands as such. Just making the note right now, just for the sake of putting it on record. Let's move forward now to item seven. Item seven is our presentations, acknowledgements, proclamations. This section here, we have two items tonight. The first one is the comments and updates regarding the impact of federal government shutdown. I was going to take a moment tonight to talk a little bit about this, to be very clear about this. This is not about politics. This is about people's lives. What's going on with this government shutdown, it's lasted longer than any other shutdown in modern history. Regardless of how we got here, this council and this city has felt the impact of it. And we know that residents throughout the city has felt the impact of it. We have thousands of households in the city that receive SNAP benefits. We have members of our community that literally are not getting paid right now because they are federal workers. And so, there's been several things that's happened, but I want to be clear about the city and what we've done and what we can do. First of all, there was a lot of discussion about what other cities have done during this time. They're most notably in Atlanta with what Mayor Dickens was able to do, where there was a moratorium placed on evictions and stopping people's water from being shut off. And all those things are great and things that we would like to see as well. But every city's structure is a little bit different. And the fact of the matter is, is that in the city of Mableton, we don't own a water authority or a gas authority, right? We are not the landlords of anyone, meaning we do not have a housing authority. So, there are things that other cities can do. I think even the city of Austell has a gas authority, right? So, they have the ability to be able to unilaterally do those things. So, I got a lot of questions when that came up about what we were going to do and if we were going to follow suit. And the long and the short of it is, is that we can't specifically, right? What we can do, though, is we still can operate on three different levels, which is the first one is being able to marshal or convene resources around direct help for people. Second thing we can do is try to work within the bounds of whatever policy or audits as a law that we can enact. And then third is from the courts, right? From a litigious point of view. And we've operated on all three of those levels. The first one, as far as direct outreach and support, there is coordinated efforts, as many of you know, for outreach to make sure that people that do need food are able to get food. There is, just coming up on this Saturday, there's going to be a huge food distribution in Atlanta. Community Food Bank in cooperation with the Divine Nine here in Cobb County and Destiny World Church is going to be having a huge food distribution. We'll make sure that more information gets put out about this, but there's efforts going on around on that. On Saturday, there's also going to be, in Marietta, there's effort for seniors to be able to get food. But at any rate, there are efforts that are going around to try to make sure. We can't forget our local nonprofits as well that's been working overtime, triple time, to make sure that people that are in need are getting those. I've been in discussion with United Way over the last couple of weeks. They've launched a program called 211, just like you call 911 or 811. If you need resources, you can call 211. And whether it's rental assistance, whether it's food, whether it's your water's getting shut off, they will make sure you find resources to be able to help. So, we've been active on that front. Secondly, in ways that we can help from a policy and legislative perspective, I've mentioned that there's not a lot we can do directly when it comes to that. We have looked at opportunities to be able to look and see what's possible from the county and from the state as far as what they can do. I've had conversations with both entities. As a matter of fact, this past week, I spoke directly with the governor's office. I had a long conversation with the chief operating officer in the governor's office and talked about things that could be done and things that would be done if this shutdown would continue. And on the third level, which is from a litigation perspective, I did sign on to an amicus brief, which is basically a letter that would work to force the government to push forward with the SNAP benefits. And that, I did not bring that to the council. I did that on my own volition as an individual. If it looks like this would kind of persist further, it would be something we'd come back to the council and be able to discuss if we wanted to sign on as a city. It's important that we operate on all three levels and do what we can where we can. As it stands right now, I think the latest is that the House is back in session after a month or so, and there will be votes that will be taken within the hour, probably. I don't want to try to forecast what may happen, but I think everyone could probably go on their phones and Google and see what's the likelihood of what's going to happen. Again, we're not talking politics. We're talking about facts, right? What's happening on the ground and how it's impacted this city. I want us to get back to where everyone's feeling more comfortable about where they are, about their jobs, their livelihoods, their abilities to move forward. Mableton will be a prosperous city. We are a prosperous city, we'll continue to be. This is just another one of those challenges, right, that we're going to go through. So, we're going to leave it at that for tonight, but the more information that comes out about anything that continues to go forward with that specifically as relates to people needing food or additional resources, we will make sure that those resources, the information for those are available to you. Madam Clerk, did you have something to add? No. Okay. With that being said, we are going to move forward to our financial report. We do have our finance director, Karen Ellis, who's going to give us our Q1 financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Tonight, I'd like to review our quarter one, which is July through September of 2025. This is the first quarter of our fiscal year. The city is currently at 25% of the year. That's one-fourth of our fiscal year. So, as you look at these numbers, you can gauge where we're at compared to what the average would be, which is 25%. Our total revenues are at approximately 1.4 million, which is about 10% of the budget. The reason they are below 25% is because at this time of year, we are in the middle of our audit. So, a lot of revenues that the city has collected in this first quarter have to be pushed back into a previous fiscal year. We are on target with all of the collections that we should be receiving. So, although it is a little bit below 25%, we are in a great place with revenues. Excuse me. Expenditures are at 2.3 million, which is a little under 15%. And that just means we are being fiscally conservative. We don't want to really spend everything that we have. We want to spend conservatively and in a good fiscal position. So, being below in expenditures is a good thing. That's a positive thing. Some of the things, the variances, I wanted to point out that are above or below the norm. Franchise taxes, again, that has to do with the revenue collections. Those are a little bit below because of the accrual process of the audit. We receive most of these quarterly, so we are on target with where we should be. Business and occupational tax, we're, again, at about 4%. And we have sent out our renewals, but they are not due until March. So, we will see a huge influx because you don't have to pay until March. So, we'll see a huge influx in March, so that's why they're a lot lower than what you would normally see. Insurance premium tax, that is a once-a-year tax. That comes in October 15th every fiscal year, so you will see that in your next year, next quarter's financials. License and permits, we are doing amazing at 30%. That's trending above our budget estimates. And as well as interest, we are collecting as interest rates are still in a good position for us. We are receiving more than what we budgeted. We did budget very conservatively. So, we are in the black for all of our interest. For expenditures, risk management, we are at 55.8%. We did budget a little high, not knowing what kind of assets the city would be bringing on throughout the fiscal year, but this $47,000 represents pretty much all of the insurance premium that we will pay for our risk management, which is our cybersecurity, our property and liability, our officials' insurance. We'll have one more payment as the new fiscal year begins. Now, you're going to look at the cash position for the city here. I've separated it into two sections. For the city of Mableton, our cash position with all of our checking account balances as well as our investments for the city is a little over 7.2 million, earning interest in very conservative instruments, United Bank Money Market and Georgia Fund One, which is a state pooled investment, authorized investment. And then for the Mableton Urban Redevelopment Agency, another authority under the city, we have almost 2.5 million there left from our initial 2024 bond issue that can be used for urban redevelopment throughout the city. Now, we'll look at the general fund revenues in a little bit more detail. As mentioned in the prior slide, you can see each one more defined, detailed. The property taxes represent the The property taxes represent the T A V T, which is auto. It is not property taxes on any residential or commercial properties within the city. This is just for your automobiles. That's at 27%. We're on target. Another thing to look at is our charges for services. These are where you're looking at parks and rec, special events. We budgeted this very conservatively. And as you all know, we've had some great events so far this year, so we are trending a little bit above budget for that as well. And then transfers from other funds. What this number represents is transfers that come from other places that fund the general fund. In this amount here is our percentage that comes from our hotel motel tax. The hotel motel tax is a separate fund. It does not 100% go to the city. Only a portion of it does. The rest needs to be used for destination marketing operations. And now we'll move on to expenditures through 930. As you can see, I won't go through every single line, but every department other than our risk management, which I explained on a prior slide, is trending below budget, which means we are again being very fiscally conservative and responsible with the city funds. I'll go into some new funds that the city has. Now, the first one is the Tree Fund. This is funded for a transfer that comes from the city. So we are at one quarter. So one quarter will be transferred from the city to the Tree Fund to fund future projects that will be approved, brought to council and approved by council as they come up. We are at one-fourth of the year, but no approved projects have come up yet, so nothing has been spent of that one-quarter transfer in from the general fund. Next, you will see the Six Flags Special District. This is a new district for the city that was inherited from Cobb County. This is our Six Flags Special District. That assessment was just done in October, so we won't see any collections again until the next quarter's financials. We kept the millage in this district identical to what Cobb had assessed. So we're on target to collect approximately 1.2 and 1/4 million for the Six Flags Special Next, we have our Hotel Motel Tax Fund. This is all the hotels and motels within the city pay a tax on occupancy. We are budgeted at $375,000 annually to collect. We are above budget here. We are trending high, but this is a seasonal area, so we will track this closely. If we continue to trend above budget, we will probably do a budget amendment to properly capture that number. And those two funds, again, part of it goes to the general fund. General fund's portion and the balance will be going to DMO for marketing to bring tourism and hospitality into the city of Mableton. Next, we have our Capital Projects Fund, where all of our capital assets come in. Majority of this is going to, you're going to see is information services, which is citywide computers and computer-like equipment that's needed throughout the city, as well as the item under general government building. That is all of our fleet vehicles. We budgeted half a million dollars on fleet vehicles. We have almost spent all of that as of September. We spent about $350,000, I believe we spent the balance in October. So you will see that at almost 100% of budget in your next quarter's financials. Again, this is a transfer that comes in from the general fund, so excess funds come into this fund to pay for these capital items. And then we have our Urban Redevelopment Agency Fund. Activity here is mostly going to be your interest income and the amounts that you're going to see here in current period for general government buildings are professional services that were used as we ramped up to levy our new, or levy, to issue our new 2025 bond issue. There were some land services that needed to be performed, and that's our $70,000 that was spent to date. The only thing budgeted in this fund is your principal and interest, which is funded by the general fund. So again, this will be funded for collections that come in from the general fund and transferred into the Urban Redevelopment Agency to pay for this bond principal and interest. And if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I do have one question. Did you say the occupational taxes are due in March?
Yes, the renewals are out and they are not due until March. Correct.
Are they typically collected December 31st?
Excuse me?
Are they traditionally collected December 31st?
No, alcohol, alcohol is collected December 31st.
What now? Okay, so, okay, so the due date for March includes sanctions. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, nationally, only about 2% of people ever run for public office. And among them, only about 10% of those ever win. Those people who run for office never win. And out of that number, only a very, very, very small member of them get to serve in an inaugural capacity of any kind. What is going to transpire this evening is the end of a term for two council members that have helped do something that not many people on the walk on this planet can ever say, who boldly and courageously enough stood up to run for office without any previous experience and to help shape something completely brand-new. And so, tonight, I want to recognize and honor two true public servants. Councilwoman Damiela O'Dapo of District Two and Councilwoman Patricia Ock of District Four. Both of you have served with an immense amount of passion, credibility, and desire. And for that, you are both to be commended. The willingness to serve while still working full-time jobs, while caring for families, spouses, and still being available to the council and to the 13,000-plus that are in your district. That is to be commended as well. The percentage of people who get this opportunity again is statistically zero because it's I don't ever want either one of you to forget that. The history books of the city of Mableton will proudly carry both your names in it. You helped lay the foundation for what we all know is going to become an incredible, incredible city. Regardless of what you decide to do after this, decide whether to decide to stay in Mableton or leave, or start a business, or continue your career, or have more children. That choice is yours. But it doesn't matter after this because you will always, always be an inaugural city council member, and no one can ever take that away from you. So with that being said, the council has, and staff has come together to provide something a little unique. I would like to read this, and it says, "The founding council member award is presented to Councilmember Patricia Ock and the Councilwoman Damiela O'Dapo. In recognition of your leadership, dedication, service as an inaugural city council member, thank you for your commitment and playing a vital role in shaping the foundation of this city's legacy. City of Mableton, I as the mayor, city council member, and staff would like to honor and thank you both tonight."
The mayor asked if I had any words. I guess we're going to say some things. I wasn't prepared for it, but I just want to thank everyone in the city of Mableton for your faith in me for the little while that I was here, and I appreciate you. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve these past two years. And I wish our new members to our council the very best in your term and to all the citizens of Mableton, wishing for a bright future. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Owens.
Oh my gosh, I'm trying not to be emotional, but I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to serve in the capacity that I have for the past two years. It's been the greatest time of my life, and I just want to say thank you. I'm just going to stop talking before I get emotional, but thank you so much. I'm so grateful, and I'm still a proud resident of District Two. I'm sure I'll see you all around, one way or another. So thank you, thank you so much. And this was so thoughtful, very thoughtful, too. Thank you.
Thank you both again. And we're now going to go to public comments where we may hear some more people that may decide to give their thanks and gratitude. With that, Madam Clerk, I'm sure we have comment cards.
Yes, right now I have nine comment cards. Remember, there's a two-minute time limit, and please follow the decorum rules, be polite and respectful. And the mayor and council do not answer questions during this time because we, it is a business meeting, and they will, of course, they will know and take notes, and staff or someone could get back with you later, but during this period, we don't go back and forth with conversation. So the first person is China Cardrich, and then we have Jolie Elder after China.
Testing? Oh, perfect. That was awesome. I just, I feel super grateful to be part of, witness that moment and your leadership, Mayor Owens. Good evening. My name is China Cardreus Clements, and I'm the proud product of Mableton. I went to Riverside Elementary, Lindley Middle School, and graduated from Campbell's IB program. I'm a former AP and IB math teacher and a founding high school principal, and I am here to talk to you a little bit about the school that I'm proposing here in Mableton, which is Power Public Schools, which is a six-through-12 early college AI-empowered charter school. I spoke in January of this year, and today I'm just here to not only express my gratitude for our city and the support, but also just provide an update. And so, since January, we have built an incredible team. I have 11 amazing board members and six advisory board members. We've raised $5 million for our school, and we've gained a lot of beautiful national attention from California all the way to Harvard about and for the school that we are building. Today was a very monumental moment in our school's history. We got to interview in front of Cobb County schools, and they were very, very excited about our school and what we're bringing to the community. And so that's the update. But just so that you know, this is your first time hearing from me. Power Public Schools is an innovation hub for our nation. It is an AI-empowered early college secondary school that not only teaches students how to prompt with AI, but truly build to create solutions. Is that time? Oh, I'm so sorry. Anyways, I'm just here, just to finish. I'm just here to give the update, to share the gratitude. And then, if you are interested in speaking in a public comment in front of Cobb County schools over the next few months, reach out to me. My website is powerps.org.
Jolie Elder, and following Jolie is Denny Wilson.
Well, I see you already thought a little bit about what I was going to say, which is, we have two members who haven't been re-elected. And I just wanted to ask, now is a moment for our city government to set a precedent about how we're going to thank them and honor their service to us. And I see you picked something private, but I hope you'll consider doing something public as well, like planting a tree, naming a brick in our new city hall, something that establishes that history going forward. And so I humbly ask our city council, please, to be thoughtful and initiate a tradition that will reflect well upon our city in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Ock and Councilwoman Ola Dapo, thank you both for your service, and you guys are leaving some big shoes to fill. I came to the council, I think it was the last meeting, and I talked to you guys about this stormwater fee that the county is charging. I went and talked to the county at the last meeting because they just seem to be the gift that keeps on giving. I mean, they've increased our water bills by 30-some-odd percent. They've increased the amount of our bill going forth. Every year, January 1st, we get an increase in our water bill. And now here, they're back with the stormwater fee of $4.75 a month. I mean, this is what they're saying they're going to charge, but who knows in 12 to 24 months what that fee is going to turn out to be. If you want a good example of how the county has built even the city of Mableton out, go up to Mableton Parkway and South Gordon Road, walk through where they're building those new townhomes, and look at the infrastructure there, how they put big boulders along the walkway to try and hold the water back. But what happens is, when we get a heavy rain, the water is just going to run over those boulders, and I don't know if anybody's been through there when it's been raining. South Gordon is a mess. It's like a, it's like a river. I mean, and not to mention Mableton Parkway, when you go down in the slope, all of the stormwater that we get there. So I'm just asking you guys, as a council, to stand up to the county. I mean, because the way that this city has been built out, the only thing that's going to happen is, when we get heavy rain, we're going to get a lot of flooding. So you might as well get ready for it because that's what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have Lee Miller, and then following Lee is Roy Wilcox.
Lee Miller, Wexford Court. I'd like to express my appreciation to Councilmember Ock for her service as city council representative for the people of District Four. Councilmember Ock has performed her duties as an elected Councilmember Ock has performed her duties as an elected official in a manner that's outstanding in every respect. She has been positive, helpful, polite, kind, and unfailingly truthful. She has been diligent about staying conversant with the details of city council business during its pendency while keeping citizens informed. She made decisions that she believed are in the best interest of residents, and in a way, they remain faithful to the oath of office that calls for the discharge of official duties, quote, "without fear or favor." I believe that over time, many people will look back on Councilmember Ock's term on the Mableton City Council with renewed appreciation. Councilmember Ock, we thank you. You will be missed.
Thank you, sir.
Following Roy Wilcox is Dante Philpott.
My name is Roy Wilcox, and this is a little bit different because I'm trying to address and concern the development on Floyd Road of the Mill Grove Vista project of 12 buildings, 304 units, and how it became rezoned. It's my understanding that currently Cobb County Tax Excesses has this address as residential for small residential tracts, and this is with the property of the Barnes Land Investments. But this larger development has come about, and just this past summer, I saw some surveyors at the property and sent out a request to Mableton City Zoning in regards to how's this being zoned? And the response was, you can find it on the Cobb County map, and that if there was anything changed, there would be signs, although that has not happened. When I found out about the development, I sent an email to Mr. Wheeler with regards to zoning, and how did we have a change in a zoning for a high-density development in a low-density area? I have not heard back. Now, this is a traditional neighborhood zoning that's designated by Cobb County. It's possible that Cobb County gave or made a change, but there's no record of it in their books. So I want to know if the city of Mableton has any rezoning information from Cobb County to address the change into T5? Is there any information about how it's gonna impact our schools and traffic and fire and safety and water runoff and all those changes? I understand this area is a transit zone by the city of Mableton, but how and when was it identified to be given that change to high-density of T5? I would just like for someone to be able to respond publicly, not today, in order for me to have an understanding of how this came about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dante Philpott, and following him is Rosie Turner.
This room echoes, and so it's really hard to hear, so if you can speak into the microphone, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Test, is that good? Okay. Mayor and council, thank you for your, for the opportunity this evening. Thank, thank all of you guys for your, for your service from District One to Four. But I will say, we live in a, in a politically heightened time, and as such, we've seen people make irrational and foolish decisions, all in, all in the name of attempting to carry out theirs or someone else's political agendas. The regrettable and problematic part of this is that innocent people are typically roped into the fray. But this is not what we expect of leaders. We expect leaders to be grounded in the purpose of daily service to and for others. We expect leaders to foster collaboration, to motivate, to inspire, to guide, to support, and steer the ship towards the common goals of the people you represent. We expect leaders to build bridges, not walls. Leaders think, we expect leaders to think and act in pluralities as opposed to singularities. Leaders stand in front and take the slings and arrows so nobody else has to. Leaders knowingly walk into the fire, into the lion's den, into adverse situations with the intentions of fighting their way out of it. And in this city leadership, we expect leaders to represent the will of all and not just some, and as constituents, we have to trust that you're operating as such, and if that trust is broken, if you're operating for the singular and not the plural, then accountability becomes the order. Accountability for your decisions, for your actions, for your motives, and yes, even your voting record, all of it comes into question. For me, service is a labor of love, but I will say my service shouldn't be taken lightly. One thing that I don't respond to is, I don't respond to bullying, and so I kind of leave you with this. The next time you think about sending one of your bullies or allies to my inbox, I would encourage you to do two things. One, think about it long and hard before you do, and two, try to disguise it a little bit better so I know that you're not behind it.
Thank you, sir.
Following, following Rosie Turner is Christopher Jones.
Hi, my name is Rosie Turner, and I live in Mableton, and I'm here tonight to honor my outgoing councilperson, Patricia, and the city of Mableton's inspection department. They have both done an awesome job. I called Patricia about an issue that was at the fire station, I mean, the gas station on Floyd Road, and it has been an ongoing problem, and Patricia went over there and looked at it, and the, kept up with the inspection department, and they have now made it a brand-new place. It is awesome. Thank you for the job. Well done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Following Christopher Jones is Regina Nelson.
Hello, I'm Chris Jones. I've been here in Georgia for five years, and so I decided to purchase a home, so I've been here in, in the city for over two years now. So just speaking on behalf as a concerned neighbor, I live in a new community off of an old, old Buckhead Highway called Caldwell Park. I guess our streetlights are not on at night, and so most of our owners are women, quite a few have families, and others have dolls. And so I'm just very concerned because we have had quite a few trespassers who have came, and we tried to do the best that we can as neighbors to alert each other. We make sure that we have an alarm system and cameras and even a chat, so if there are any activities, we always make sure that everyone's safe. And so I'm just concerned that something might happen. So I think one of the best things that will be, that'd be great for us if the streetlights are on.
Thank you, sir.
Regina Nelson is our last one.
Good evening, Mayor Owens and councilmembers, and Chris is my neighbor, and so my name is Regina Nelson, and I wrote something, so I'm gonna just read it. And I'm a resident of the Caldwell Park community in Mableton. I previously reached out to the city and Cobb DOT regarding the ongoing streetlight outage in our neighborhood caused by the disconnection of service by our builder, Crawford Creek Communities. Unfortunately, our streetlights are still not functioning and haven't been since September, and our community continues to remain completely, in complete darkness each evening. This continued outage has left residents feeling unsafe and frustrated, and to Chris's point, we have had people from neighboring communities come on people's back porches, sit down on their patio furniture, people have dumped dogs over there, and it's very unsafe. And as he mentioned, there's a lot of women and children in that community. Many residents have families, children, and their seniors who should not have to navigate dark streets due to the lapse in communication and accountability between a builder, HOA, and utility company. While I understand that the city may not have direct control over issues like this, I'm asking for assistance and advocacy from the city to help facilitate a resolution between all responsible parties. Additionally, I would like to recommend that the city consider implementing a formal checklist or governance process, if there isn't one already in place, to prevent this from happening in other developing communities. This can include requiring builders or developers to confirm the official transfer responsibilities such as utilities, lighting, and maintenance before a final occupancy or community handoff. This issue highlights a serious gap in oversight that affects resident safety in our day-to-day. I ask for support in restoring the streetlights to Caldwell Park, holding the builder accountable, and for measures to be put in place to ensure no other neighborhood faces these same challenges in the future. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, I believe that was the last, that was the last speaker? Correct. Great, thank you. All right, council, we're gonna move ahead to our item 10, which is our consent agenda. We went over these items on Monday, so given that, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Ock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There are no opposition, the ayes have it. We do not have any unfinished business tonight, so it takes us to item 12, which is our new business. We do have several items, new business. The first one is a consideration of approval of an agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association and the city of Mableton for the collection of unpaid, escaped, and delinquent privileged or occupational license taxes and fees from firms or associations' transaction insurance business in the city. We have Ms. Garner, Garver, I'm sorry, or one of our deputies to speak about this. Do you want to go ahead and, I guess, expound? We talked about it some Monday at the work session, but I do believe there were a couple of questions that came up, so I don't know if you have those ready, but first, feel free to add your comments, ma'am.
Sure. Good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. This is an agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association to help assist in collecting insurance license fees. The city charges $150 per insurance that writes policies within the city. Those policies are hard for a city to capture all alone. Generally, we send out invoices, and they may pay, but we don't necessarily know who all these insurance companies come. GMA does offer a service where they do collect on behalf of the city. They would be collecting the ones that the city did not collect on its own. This agreement does have GMA, they would maintain 50% of the revenue they collect, but again, the city would do the first effort in collection, so this would be recovering other revenue that we may not be able to collect otherwise. I am here, if you have any specific questions, if there were any other that were unanswered.
I think there was a question that we had at the work session about the 50%. Did we get further clarification on that?
GMA is amenable to negotiation. My request, if approved tonight, would be to authorize in substantial form, so that way we have the flexibility to change the language more favorable.
And Ms. Garver, you had mentioned that the city is still taking action to do collections ourselves, but this is above and beyond that, correct?
Right, so we, as, as our lists grow, you know, we'll start with whatever we have now, but as we know who our insurance companies, we will bill those annually, but they won't all pay. Many insurance companies pay on their own, and so those will come directly to the city as well. So this will be capturing the ones that the city was not able to collect on its own.
Okay. Has GMA done any, like, preliminary assessment or any of that to the fact, or it's just that we're just going to them for the service?
Not that I'm aware of, other than I do know they provide this service to many other cities in the, in the state.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point in time, council, do you have any other questions of Ms. Garver? If not, what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to approve this in substantial form, as our attorney had mentioned.
I make a motion to approve an agreement with GMA and the city of Mableton for collection of unpaid, escaped, and delinquent privileged or occupational license taxes and fees from firms or associations' transacting insurance business in the city in substantial form.
Aye, second. Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Davis. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion made by Councilwoman Oladapo, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There are no opposition, the ayes have it, this motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Garver. I will move now to item 12B, which is consideration of approval of resolution of the city of Mableton requesting and authorizing the city's local legislative delegation to introduce legislation at the regular 2026 session of the General Assembly, authorizing a referendum election for the city's ability to exercise redevelopment and other powers and for other lawful purposes. We do have Director Jones here. Nice to see you tonight, Artie. How are you, sir? Good. So, Artie, I know that we have had some progress with this already. I know that we was going to put this on the agenda a few weeks ago, but we had pulled that back to ensure that State Representative Cummings, who is our state representative in this area, had an opportunity to review, and I did think I mentioned to you that she has reviewed that. It's all thumbs up, ready to go.
Yeah, well, thank you, everyone. As you can remember, on October 6th, I made an initial presentation to mayor and council on redevelopment powers law, and that's our ability, that's just the first step of our ability, being able to utilize future tax revenue from development that would happen within the city of Mableton to fund infrastructure costs in various developments within the redevelopment area. On this evening, this is the second step, this is a step that, for mayor and council to sign a resolution that would allow our local state legislators to introduce into the Georgia Assembly legislation to adopt redevelopment powers law. If there are, if it is approved in the House and the Senate, then at that time, well, the mayor, I'm sorry, the governor would sign off on that in March, and then it would be placed on a referendum for the community to vote on. The great thing about redevelopment powers law and tax allocation districts, which is what we want to get to, is we're utilizing the developer's money to fund the infrastructure instead of the funding coming from the general fund revenue. So it's a great way to fund redevelopment throughout the community on the developer's dime. So on this evening, I'm asking you guys support in supporting a resolution to go before the state legislators to start January 1st and to continue this process in adopting redevelopment powers law. I'm here to address any questions that you might have.
Council, do you have any questions of Director Jones?
Is, you mentioned the fee, is that fee normally assumed by the developers? Is that the way it works? I think that's what you just said.
Yes, usually, when developers come into your community, if there's some infrastructure costs even beyond the boundaries of their particular project, they may want the city to participate in funding that. And how I look at it is that you have to justify what is the project, and at the same time, do you have funding the general fund to be able to do that? I would rather the developer pay for those funds as opposed for it to come out of the general fund revenue. It's just like if you were building a house for yourself, and you said, well, okay, there's a water line over here, and it's gonna cost $10,000 to get to it. Well, I don't think the community's gonna fund that. But if you had the opportunity to be able to use redevelopment powers law to pay for that infrastructure because of the future tax revenue, that makes, you know, the best sense in the world.
Any other questions for Director Jones? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this resolution, or, yeah, to approve this resolution. Who? Who said that? You did? Okay.
So moved me.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. Any further discussion, council? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear very well. Who made the motion?
Council, Councilwoman Oladapo, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. And hearing no discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of the motion made by Councilwoman Oladapo, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, it's passed. Thank you, Director Jones. Thank you, Director Jones. Next, Council, we have item 12C, which is a second read, which is a consideration of approval of an ordinance setting the FY '26 regular meeting schedule. If you all recall, we have already passed this in resolution form. It was noted by our city attorney that we need to come back and approve this in ordinance format. Nothing, to my knowledge, has changed. We already had a first read on this. This is simply the second read to go ahead and approve this. With that being said, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this ordinance setting the FY '26 regular meeting schedule.
I'd like to make him-
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion for the approval of an ordinance setting the fiscal year 2026 regular meeting schedule.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Ola Doppo and seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Coe, no, sorry, Herndon, seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Coe. Again, this is a second read, so we will move forward. You have any discussion on this? There are no discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor of, all those in favor of approval of the motion made by Councilwoman Herndon, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, Council. We'll move forward now to item 12E, which is a consideration of approval of the mayor negotiating and executing substantial form, an addendum for professional services agreement with Retail Strategies for the RFP-
Mayor, you skipped. Did you skip?
Oh, my apologies, yes. Let's go back, my apologies, to 12D, which is another second read. This is the second read for the ordinance updating Chapter 14, which is animal control. This is an ordinance where we have taken ordinance from, basically from Cobb County, and if you, Council, we talked about this on Monday, that ordinance was largely stripped down. We had a meeting with the county where we had agreed that the county will basically maintain this, the provisions within the ordinance, and our ordinance basically references the county's ordinance for animal control. And the, the biggest thing that I was concerned about was when the county would make a change to their ordinance in animal control, that we would be notified and be able to take appropriate action. And I do believe that was agreed upon with the county, and there's a process now in place to do that.
Yes, the county did make, the county attorneys made that commitment to make sure that we were briefed on any, any changes to their ordinance.
Okay, great. That's the only update or discussion I had on that. At this point in time, I would like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this ordinance at this time.
I'd like to make a motion as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Jeff Coates, properly seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. Any further discussion of this matter? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval by the motion made by Councilwoman Jeff Coe, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. We are now at item E, which is the consideration of approval for the mayor to negotiate and execute in substantial form the addendum and professional services agreement with Retail Strategies for the RFP 25-03. Mr. Jones, you can make your way back up here if you want, sir. I do not know why the clerk didn't put these together, but she may just want to make sure you've got your steps in for this evening.
All right, thank you. Back in October, I'm sorry, in August, an RFP was put out for retail, to identify an experience partner to assist with the city's retail growth, economic positioning, and corridor activation strategy. The solicitation was advertised publicly via GPR, Georgia Procurement Registry website, by the procurement department, and the reason for this particular strat, this retail strategy is to provide data-driven site and corridor analysis, to recommend strategies to attract sustainable investment, to support public-private partnership development and marketing research, and to coordinate with city staff and regional agencies. Basically, what this strategy will help us to do, or contracting with this organization, Retail Strategies, is will, it will help us to fill those vacant storefronts all along the corridor, it will identify leakage within the city, what type of retail that we should be going after versus others that, you know, we're already receiving our fair share, and also, it will help us to be able to increase tax revenues. It will definitely help us as far as the redevelopment areas that we're looking at now, and since we're dealing with land use, and identifying what type of development that we can attract here in, within the City of Mableton. We received two bids back, and we advertised for 45 days, and out of those, staff recommends that we, we contract with Retail Strategies. They have a great deal of experience in putting these strategies together. The great thing about Retail Strategies that lots of other firms do not do is that they also have relationships with the brokers of the retailers. You can know exactly what type of retail you want within your community, but if you don't have the brokers and you don't have the people that are in place to be able to go after that retail on your behalf, and that is what they will do, then, you know, you do, you're, that's just an added value as far as Retail Strategies is concerned. So, I'm here to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Jones. As to the question I have or comment is, this is often referred to as a, as a leakage study. Do you want to, like, take a moment and explain exactly what you mean by that?
Yeah, it sounds kind of dirty when I talk about a leakage study, but it's not a dirty thing. Leakage study is the ability of companies to be able to take your credit card information, and I'm not talking about your credit card numbers, but they will understand, and they also take your phone information, because they know where you were located at any given time, and they can tell which zip code that you live in, and which zip code you buy groceries in. They can tell which zip code you buy furniture in, and they can tell exactly how much money is leaving the community and how much money is being spent in the community. As an economic development person, my goal is, is that you, to utilize your disposable income within the City of Mableton so that we'll be able to generate more general fund revenue. Also, I want to be able to attract people from other communities to also shop in Mableton, to use their tax revenue, to utilize their tax revenue also. Every dime that you spend outside the community is funding fire departments in other communities, parks in other communities, police in other communities. My goal is to be able to capture as much of that, as much of those expenditures here within the City of Mableton. And one way to do that is to be able to work with a company like Retail Strategies to identify the leakage so that we know what we want to go after, and also to recognize whether we get an unfair share of or more than our fair share of. Of course, we want to continue to get more than our fair share of those types of revenues also. So, leakage studies are very, very, very important. The days of, you know, retailers just setting up at a certain intersection just because the traffic counts seem to be higher, and because, you know, there's a certain amount of people that live in that particular area, those days are over with. People can live, as you know, I'm quite sure that some of you have probably shopped in one city, one zip code, and you've probably driven through three or four other zip codes to shop. Retail strategies and leakage studies can show you exactly what that, you know, exactly how much of that funding is leaving your community. It's very valuable information, and also, whenever we start to work on these studies, the community will be able to communicate with the Economic Development Department, let me know what type of retail do you want here versus the type that you don't want here. And then we can refine that strategy, that plan, that we can utilize for years to come. Of course, retail is market-driven, and you may need to do an update every two to three years. This particular contract is only for one year, but it can be extended for two additional years if we feel that we have already captured the type of retail that we want, or we see that in the market is changing. Is that okay, Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Yes. And I, I'm happy you were able to explain that by the terminology, but if I'll take a second, for those of us that live here, we know what that means firsthand, right? For those of us that particularly live in this area that not only don't shop in the zip code, that don't even shop in this county, because Thornton Road is right down the street where all the hotels and restaurants and shops are, so not only are we losing that out of the city, it's actually directly going outside of the county. Or for those of us that live further up north, that spend a lot of our time and money in Smyrna and in Cumberland and in bindings, for people that don't think that we have discretionary income, this, this study is a way for us to be able to show what that actually is when we start talking to developers and cleaning up some of these areas, getting rid of the food deserts and the baking deserts and the healthcare deserts, we'll have the numbers to hopefully be able to show that. So, I'm in favor of this, I'm happy to see this as, as it's here. Again, I, I fully expect it to, to articulate what most of us know and see and live and feel. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Director Jones?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Ma'am.
So, I know you said the contract is one year with the ability to extend it for an additional two years.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wondering, based on your experience, what is the likelihood that one year will gain the, the data and information that, you know, you would need in order to push Mableton forward with respect to retail?
Yeah. I personally feel that all three years will be needed. The thing about retail is, I'm going to use a grocery store as an example, the initial year, they're going to provide us with the strategy and what our, the leakage is and everything. If we, if a grocery store owned today knew they wanted to build in the City of Mableton, and they already had property picked out for that grocery store, they would have to make sure to go through the zoning, they would have to do a number of different things, due diligence, there would be a lot of soft costs, they would have to make sure it was within their budget. Grocery stores will say that, okay, we're going to build 50 grocery stores this year nationwide, we're going to build two in the state of Georgia, so we have to make sure that, they have to make sure that everything aligns. In addition to that, the process for, like I said, building a grocery store takes anywhere from 24 months to three years, and that's when they break ground. It takes probably anywhere from 12 to 18 months to build the grocery store at that time, so it's a very long process. And the thing is, is that in addition to the grocery store, most times, the grocery store is the anchor. You're going to have other types of retailers that are going to be in that strip also with that grocery store, so you need Retail Strategies to be able to go after the smaller, the smaller retailers that would, that would support the grocery store also. It's always good to have a company like Retail Strategies to kind of tell us where the trends are, what's going on, the types of retailers that we should be going after, because that information changes from year to year. I'm a part of ICSC, which is the International Council on Shopping Centers, and that's the largest real estate conference in the world, and it happens out, the largest one happens in Las Vegas. Of course, they've just had a regional one here in, in, at the World Congress Center about a month ago, but that particular, at that particular conference, Retail Strategies has a booth set up where they'll actually invite the other retailers over, and they will talk with staff and other individuals that are looking, and other, I guess, developers and investors, to fill their stores and their commercial properties. So, to answer the question, I feel that all three years is going to be needed, especially since the City of Mableton is a new city.
I have one additional question.
Yes.
Can the, the information that we glean from, you know, their process, can that be used to encourage businesses to actually make an investment, or this is just more so that we have knowledge in terms of, you know, what direction to go?
That's exactly what this information is used for. Even though I will, we will have the Retail Strategy information and have the leakage study information, what that tells me is, it helps me to take 30 different retailers and draw down to the ones that we are actually qualified for. It might be three to five retailers that we can go after, and then from that point, I can go to them, and I know that we have what it is, that they actually, I guess, they're, we fulfill their requirements. And then after that, we'll have to find out, okay, are they willing to build in this area? If they are already going to build in the town next to us, which is five miles away, and they have requirements that the next store needs to be 15 to 20 miles away, well, then we know that we would not be able to get that particular store, but we might be able to get one of their competitors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Hearing none, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to, for consideration of approval of this service agreement.
I make a motion for the consideration and approval for the mayor to negotiate and execute in substantial form the addendum and professional services agreement with Retail Strategies for RFP 25-03.
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. It's been properly seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Coe. Any further discussion, Council? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approving a motion made by Councilwoman Davis, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, it's passed. Thank you again, Director Jones. At this point in time, there's no other business in front of us this evening. With that being said, I will go over to our staff. Madam Director, any comments this evening?
No.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Well, yes, I just want to comment, give an update about the qualification of our ordinances. We've been getting questions about people wanting our code, our code of ordinances to look like other cities with the MUNICode. We're in the process of working on that. We're under contract with them, and the attorney and I have an appointment in December, and we'll be going over a rough draft of what they've done and going over it with legal. So, we're getting close, but the process is about a year, and we did not contract until January 2025, so we're getting close, but we're not quite there. But just want everybody to know, it won't be much longer that we'll have a qualified ordinance on our website.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if I remember correctly, this was, this was by design or on purpose, right? Because I remember you saying early on you wanted to wait until we had a substantial number of ordinances before you went forward with MUNICode.
Yes, MUNICode would not do a contract until we had a good amount of ordinances adopted. So, after we had the zoning code adopted, they agreed to go under contract with us, and that was not adopted until October, November 2024. So, by the time we got the contract ready, it was January 2025, so now we're, they're working on it.
Sure, thank you. I, I just say that to note that, again, these things can take time, and while we know where we want to get to, you know, we may have a plan on how to get there, but it takes a while to, to, to literally get to where we want to, so thank you for that. Madam Attorney?
Can you have one more?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes. Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, briefly, I want to, again, I know we've had the ceremony and we've given the plaques and those good things, but I just want to, again, thank both Councilwoman Ola Doppo.
Oh, I'm not speaking into the mic.
Councilwoman Ola Doppo and Councilwoman for their service. It's been an honor for me to be part of an inaugural council, and I have had nothing but respect for each of these councilwomen, as both councilwomen and as individuals as residents. So, again, thank you for your service, and looking forward to things happening, we going forward again, and welcoming the incoming folks as well. So, but thank you again for all that you've done, all your service, all your sacrifice, and your dedication.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ola Doppo?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I know we've had the, like Councilwoman Davis said, the ceremony, but I wrote a, just a few things that I want to make sure I cover here tonight. As many of you know, tonight is my last meeting as a council member, and it is very sweet, you know, bittersweet moment for me, but I want to start by actually congratulating the newly elected councilmembers, Councilman-elect McNeely and Brown, I think she walked out. I wish you have your success as you take on this incredible responsibility to serve our city. And to the community, thank you just feels so insufficient, because this has truly been an honor this past two years, and I'm just really grateful to be able to serve, to be able to lead, to be able to listen to you, and it's an experience that I will forever remember and proudly share with my children and my grandchildren. My most cherished moment in this journey has been watching- My most cherished moment in this journey has been watching us, along with all of your help, build something so profound from the ground up. I remember when we had no bank account, no staff, we had the staff actually working for free. And I mean, to, to, now having a presentation about what's in our fund balance has just been such a huge milestone and I'm so proud to be a part of that. And I'm just really excited to see what's ahead for Mableton. Of course, I still live here, I planned to be here for a long time. What's next, I'm not sure, but I'm definitely not having any more children. Thank you, Mayor Owens. But I'm very happy to, you know, still come to the council meetings, still cheering on Mableton, you know, from the sidelines. And I'm sure I'll, you know, see you all at the grocery store, all the meetings, all the fun stuff that we have planned for the rest of the year too. Thank you again. I do hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving, because I don't think we have another meeting until December. And also a wonderful rest of your year. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all, as always, for being here, for always supporting us. I do want to say that, you know, the past two years has been truly an interesting journey. It's been challenging. We started out, I remember, in a private dining where we had to get a chance to know each other, playing all these games and, you know, just, I know, having so much fun and then a baby shower and all these different things that we've experienced together. We started out, you know, trying to just really understand and know what this mission was about. And although we had diversity of thought, you know, difference of opinions, you know, sometimes, you know, the end state looked different, were different paths, but we were able to work through those things. It was rewarding, it was challenging, we were disagreeable at times, it was a general consensus at times, but all of our efforts got us to this particular point. And I coined us the inaugural group as the M7, the Mableton Seven. And I just want to thank Councilwoman Oladipo and Councilwoman Alk for your willingness to raise your hand, sir, because that's a courageous thing to do. The crystal flame, it's not a tear, it's a flame. It represents the initial spark that began our journey as a city. And it, we want to be able to feed that flame, to nurture it so that it grows and that it's lasting. The city, we started with this idea, right? And that idea has now grown. And then the crystal in and of itself represents clarity, strength and transparency. And as the founding members of the inaugural council, your service helped ignite the first spark. You're part of that moment when Mableton is, became more than just a dream, it's a reality, it's a city. And tonight, I just want to honor the role and recognize your part in all of that. Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, all the women who served bravely, continue to serve our country. I do want to thank you. We have any veterans here outside of the ones that are sitting on this desk? I want to thank you for your commitment, your sacrifice for protecting our freedoms against foreign and domestic threats. You represent the very best of who we are as a nation. We're grateful for your service, for the families who stand beside you and for the example that you set for all of us. China did get up during the public comments and talk about power schools, it's really a power public schools. It's an exciting opportunity. I'm really proud of the work that she's doing as a young, I presume she's a millennial, I'm guessing, but as a young lady who's passionate about education and it's very important. So I do want to encourage you all to go out and speak on behalf of this initiative, this charter school, go out to Cobb County, lend your voices and support so that we can create a school here and here in this community that serves our children daily. And she's even implementing technology. I mean, how great is that, right? So just, just wonderful for her leadership and the vision and everything that she's doing. It's pretty, pretty inspiring. District Three, we're going to have a winter coat and blanket drive, so the temperature is dropping. Many of you know that in our community, we have folks that are in need. And in the spirit of that, we're going to have a winter coat and blanket drive to show our support. And we want you to be able to donate new or gently used coats, jackets, blankets of all sizes. And no contribution is too big or too small. We can drop it off at our admin offices, there'll be a box there for you, start on Friday. So if you have anything in your closet, please bring it out, you know, because the weather is, it's getting pretty cold. We're going to have a senior Thanksgiving luncheon tomorrow. It's going to be at the Mableton Banquet Hall from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. So if you're able to join, I think it may have already closed by now though, but it's very important that we honor our, our seniors, you know, come and fellowship with us for Thanksgiving. It'll give us a chance to enjoy the holiday together with our seniors who are just so important to us in our community. So please come out. There will also be a community Friendsgiving that's on Wednesday, November 19th next week, and it is free for all, including children. It'll be at the Mableton Banquet Hall as well, and that'll be from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. Promise I'm almost done. Representative Terry Cummings is going to have a very important conversation on mental health tomorrow. It's going to be here at the Riverside Epicenter, and that's going to be from 6:30 to 8:30. Please come out, this is, this is very important. You hear Councilwoman Ferguson talk a lot about how important that initiative is to him as well. So make sure you come out and join the conversation to talk about mental health. I'll let the mayor talk about the Sneaker Ball that's coming up on Saturday. And then lastly, as we enter this Thanksgiving season, times are obviously tough. There's a lot of uncertainty that's happening and that's going on. There's a government shutdown, you know, food is expensive, gas is high, and it can feel like we're just trying to stay above water. But even in all of this, we have so much to be thankful for. Our family, our friends, and hope that, you know, things will continue to get better. So let's hold on to that hope and lift each other up and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Alk?
Thank you. Gosh, I was hoping the words would come to me when it came my time to address the public for my last time here on City Council. And it's been interesting and challenging and touching and a lot of different emotions and, and I was just kidding about that being a tear, but it might be one up here soon. Just, it's really been, it's been a ride. Thank you all for, sorry, I just, I really appreciate all of you who have watched the city grow and been supportive of the council and for me personally. And I'm going to go and pass it on to Councilwoman Herndon.
Good evening, everyone, here in the audience and our nine beautiful souls online tonight who are watching. Just wanted to personally say, you know, goodbye. No, actually farewell, but not goodbye, I forgot how the saying goes. But I really, really respect the two of you, my fellow councilwomen, and I can truly say my friends as well. You know, we not only just worked together, but we developed friendship over the two years. And I respect and appreciate the presentation that you all were given today. I thought that was very nice because you are definitely in a unique position in the sense, you are the first, you know, council members for the city of Mableton. And what I recognize is the work that we have done, including you all, has set the stage for those who come behind you and you have made the job much easier for them because we did the heavy lifting, getting the city started from the ground up. And I think anything from here, I'm not saying it's going to be easy because it's hard work regardless, you know, but at the same time, the foundation, as I said, I think the last meeting is that it's really important. So I applaud you and all of your contributions and I'm certainly looking forward to Mableton continuing to grow and to thrive. And I do want to congratulate our two incoming council members. And I'm looking forward to working with you all to continue to push Mableton forward. And since we don't have another meeting until December, we have a nice little break and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe holiday season.
Sorry, as I was, I was taking a quick look to see what the House vote was on Capitol Hill and they're voting, but there's no, has not finished yet.
And I have an alibi. I do, I didn't say congratulations to our new council members and I do want to say congratulations to Cassandra Brown for District, District Four and Michael McNeely. So I look forward, I do look forward to working with the both of you all.
Thank you, ma'am. I said at the top of this meeting, this was going to, it's going to be a unique council meeting, it was going to be one that, it literally is for the history books. So while we, I don't want to say close a chapter, as we, as we, as we progress the city, right? Because there will be a time where the rest of us on this council will leave as well. And I don't remember, you know, it's the old adage, you, you, you leave places better than what you found them. And I hope that both of you guys can feel that you've, you've left this seat better than what you found it. Well, there was no one in this seat before you found it. So you, it's only, you set a bar, you set an expectation, right? That I hope that both of our incoming members will subscribe to, look at what you guys have done and the work that you've put into it and, you know, follow it with the same amount of gusto and the same amount of work ethic that you've put towards it. I do want to, before I say happy Veterans Day, we have to back up the day before Veterans Day. Because November 10th was a milestone year for those of us that served the United States Marine Corps. It marked 250 years of extreme service to this country. November 10th, 1776 was the birth of the most fierce fighting force the world has ever known, that has protected us every single day, every night, so our hearts and minds can be at ease against those threats that are foreign and now some that are domestic. That was November 10th. November 11th is Veterans Day. We always get those two mashed together, but I have to separate those. There are Marines and then there are those others that have served. So I will say, happy birthday Marines, to those of you who are out there, and happy Veterans Day to all of those who have served in every era of our fine country to serve and protect us. We give gratitude like this only once or twice a year, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, but it's never enough to say thanks for the sacrifice that so many people, men, women, and I dare say children, because some people that joined were only 17 years old when they signed their name on the line. I look forward to continuing to build our veterans community in this city. We do have two with our incoming council members who are both veterans.
Army. I say hero.
So we will, we will continue to build this city, we'll continue to look after our veterans, our seniors. We mentioned about the senior luncheon that's coming up. We have to become a city that continues to ensure that we treat those among us that are most vulnerable in the highest amount of respect, regard as possible. And so I look forward to being able to continue to do that. With that said, there's a couple of items I wanted to highlight. The Sneaker Ball, which is a gala and fundraiser silent auction will be taking place. That's Carolyn Turner, if you're all familiar with the Hope Family Resources, that's an effort that's going to kick off. We'll look forward to that event this coming Saturday here in Mableton. If you have not seen about it, seen it or have, need more information, please go out to the website, go to Facebook, there are opportunities out there. It's going to be a great event and I'm looking forward to attending. There are a couple of things I mentioned earlier that I, that I wanted to touch on really quickly, which was about some of those efforts to make sure that we are taking care of those that need that help here. We talk a lot about those who receive, whether it's food distribution or rental assistance or whatever the case may be, but we don't always talk a lot about how you can actually give during these times, right? It's not simply about people receiving, it's also about people giving. So I want to make sure that you, you all know that organizations like Hope, like Family Life Restoration Center, and I mentioned earlier, the United Way, there's opportunities for those of us who can give, whose paychecks were not interrupted or disrupted, to feed into those organizations, to be able to help those people that need help. So I want to make sure that we think about that side as well. If we have opportunity to give during this time, please take an opportunity to do so. I mentioned the, the food distribution that's going to take place this Saturday is going to be a huge food distribution. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, I'm going to be sending information about how you can volunteer, because we need volunteers, people that literally can come out and help distribute the food. It will be on Factory Shoals, as I said before, at the Destiny World Church, will be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's funded by the, or it's hosted by Destiny World, but it will actually be Atlanta Community Food Bank who will be bringing the trucks out that will have the food there. If, if someone's watching, listening, you know people that do need help, have them to go out and sign up at the Atlanta Food Bank website so they can get a barcode so they can actually come and get the food. There is no stipulations that we're placing on that besides the fact of just going to get registered. I also want to take a moment to talk about a senior food giveaway that's going to happen next Monday on the 17th. That's going to be from 12:00 to 3:00. That's in Marietta. It's going to be, it's supported by Central Well Marietta. I'm happy to partner with them to make that happen. They'll be giving away 200 boxes of food. You have to be 60 years old or older. Make sure you bring your ID because I'm going to check. But please, this is something that we're doing. If you know any seniors, there's 200 boxes. It sounds like a lot, but again, it's not really a lot, right? So if you have folks that can take advantage of that, please do so. We'll have more information, again, on our Facebook site specifically talking about that. Beyond those, I want to say that as we continue to, to work in this city and build and grow, if those of you who is following the, the Small Business Saturday efforts that I put forth every Saturday, we're going to continue that and we're going to do my best to kind of continue that through the holiday. Everyone's schedules get, get crazy, but what we found out is that not only is it, is it supporting those small businesses, but it's also doing a lot of what Director Jones had talked about earlier. There are people that are using and looking at this opportunity to find new restaurants, new shops, new places to shop right here in our own city. A lot of these stores and shops, people drive by every single day and don't even pay them attention. I profiled a hair salon that's been here in Mableton for over 30 years, sits right on the corner of Factory Shoals. And, you know, people didn't even know they, they were there, you're just so used to driving by places, you just could get kind of blinded. So what I hope that we're doing through this effort is not just highlighting businesses, but also giving people in this city an opportunity to feed back into our city, to make sure those dollars do continue to circulate, because it does help build the city, as Director Jones said, in a multitude of ways. So with that said, I want to make sure that everyone stays warm, that everyone has an opportunity over this upcoming Thanksgiving to spend time with families and friends. We hope that people will be able to get back to work in all capacity here soon. Please use this time to reach out to those who may be struggling, who may need a little bit of help, who may be too proud to ask, to just make sure people are okay. It's Thanksgiving for families, for friends, for everyone. With that being said, thank you for your time, staff. Again, Councilwoman Oladipo, thank you for your service. Councilwoman Alk, the same to you. It's, it's been a pleasure serving with you guys, having the opportunity to, to work to stand this city up. So I thank both of you. To Councilman-elect McNeely and Ms. Brown, I know she's left, we're looking forward to having you, oh, she's, she's here? Yes.
Oh.
Yes, Councilman-elect Brown, we're looking forward to you all joining. This is an undertaking, it's a serious undertaking. Welcome, but know that there's a lot of work to be done. So, with that being said, Council, I'd like to entertain a motion to take us into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for real estate.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a potential need to expand that, Madam Attorney?
No, but it could hurt. Just in case, sometimes the topics go into other areas, so it couldn't hurt to put everything so that you're able to have that discussion if needed.
All right. I will amend my motion to include litigation, personnel, and miscellaneous exemptions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Still second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Al, and seconded by Councilman Oladipo. I think that's pretty fitting. No discussion? I'd like to call to question all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Aye as have it. Thank you. For those of you all who will not be staying with us, thank you for attending this evening, and we look forward to seeing you at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be December 8th. Thank you all.
All right, everyone. Thank you for waiting while we were in executive session. We appreciate it. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to allow us to exit executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn executive session.
Thank you. You have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Motion been properly made by Councilwoman Aug and seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. Thank you, council. I do believe we have, oh, I guess I'll take a vote on that. All in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, council. Now returning back to our regular meeting, I do believe we have one item that is in front of us. If so, I'll entertain that motion now.
All right. I move that we authorize the mayor to execute an agreement allowing tenants in city-owned property at or about 780 Concord Road through December 31st, 2025, to vacate the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion properly seconded by Councilwoman Jeff Cook. Any discussion on this, council? Here and now, I'll go ahead and call to question. All those in favor of a proven motion made by Councilwoman Herndon, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All opposed, say nay. Do I have any nays? The motion carries. Thank you. At this point in time, council, I think the only thing in front of us left is to adjourn this meeting. So if I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Doyle. Do I have a second?
You're looking at me.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Clerk, has been made by Councilwoman O'Doyle. It's been properly seconded by Councilwoman at this point in time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, no, sorry. I'm going to call a question. Sorry. She was like happy to get the question. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Council, stand adjourned. Thank you.